Call this meeting of the Madison Board of Select win to order on April twel- uh, second, sorry, on April twelfth at four thirty. First order of business to be the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And approval of the minutes from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Suppose I'll second. One in favor?
Aye.
Non-public minutes from March nineteenth, can we approve all three as a one motion?
I will make a motion to approve all three non-public minutes made public from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the manifest. Manifest reads as follows: payroll thirty-four thousand nine seventy-nine and seven cents, payroll liabilities eleven thousand one hundred and sixty and seventy-eight cents, accounts payable sixty-three thousand five hundred and one and forty cents, and two hundred and fifty thousand to the school for a total of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
I will make a motion to approve the manifest.
Second. One in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Seeing not public. Old business, ZBA appointments.
So I can offer a little insight. So at the last meeting, the board appointed Doug McAllister as a regular member and Jennifer Schaefer as a regular member. And then after we did that, we got together with Drew Gentile, the ZBA chairman, and he offered us a little insight into what had been kind of happening in the background that never got brought forward to the board. The configuration that it is here is how they wanted to, would rather see it. And we took into consideration that Jennifer was named as a regular member. Kate happened along to her the other day at the post office and had mentioned the thought, and she was okay with being an alternate to go, she had her, um, got an oath or anything like that as a regular, so she's not in in, but she said she'd be okay to be an alternate versus a regular member.
Okay, well, who is, did we appoint an extra one, or was there somebody else that we?
There was still one opening.
Yeah, there was one opening for regular member.
One, one-year term. There were two, 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 three-year terms and one two-year term. So we had appointed Doug and Jennifer to the three-year terms, leaving a two-year term open. So it sounds like Jennifer is willing to step down to alternate as opposed to a three-year term. And we have Bill Dempster and Sharon Schilling are the two?
Yeah, and technically Doug, too. Doug's getting reappointed. Sharon and Bill are being elevated to a regular member. Jake went down to an alternate. Mark Olson staying the same, and Jennifer's new as an alternate.
Who's, so Bill's doing the one-year term. And then is Sharon going to a, there was a three-year term that was open.
And I think Doug, we gave that to Doug last.
Yeah, we gave Doug the three-year and Sharon the two-year.
It had, if they were two, three years and one, two-year. So it looks like we have Bill as a one, Sharon as a two, Doug as a three. So we might just need clarification as to whether or not Sharon would be a three then? That's what we had last time when we voted.
Let me think about this. Well, if we... Well, we went by what Becky had, maybe my numbers are wrong on the, what was available, but we went by what Becky had for a roster in her and Mike's clerk list.
Okay, so that's potential that the list we had at the last meeting wasn't accurate.
Okay, still staggered enough because it's two, two, and one in terms of revolving.
Right.
Okay. And then it's a definite stagger on the alternates. I mean, if you're comfortable.
Okay, if everybody's in contact and on board, I'm on board.
I'm good.
I'll just put these with the, um, signature items.
Yep. Conservation Commission alternates, there was a question about how many alternates we need or should have. Statute doesn't say how many. And the Conservation Commission doesn't have any rules stating as to how many they'd like, so it's really up to us. But it's always been two. And we currently have two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to ask the Conservation Commission in their meeting on Thursday.
That's fine.
And see if they have a preference.
So ask them on Thursday and kick it to the next meeting?
Yeah, if that's okay.
All right. Joy, do you have a list?
I do. One thing that was brought to my attention was a resident of Vanfield Hollow is speaking to someone and mentioned that the construction is not completed yet in the development. So it was suggested that we might want to consider a bond to protect from any damage that might be sustained by construction trucks as they finish out the development.
Is it too late for that?
Oh, well, there still has to be a deed made up and all that kind of stuff before we actually have ownership of it.
And who can we ask if construction is to confirm whether or not construction is completed?
There's definitely still three, two or three open lots in there.
And from the way I understood it, that Jay was selling, who was talking, was not so much, I'm getting this right, he wasn't saying not so much the construction that triggered the taking of the roads, but the, um, just the selling of the lots is what, I think is how he was explaining to me.
So the lots are sold, but construction hasn't been done yet?
I think so, yeah. If my understanding is correct, all the lots are owned by final owners, but there's still two or three vacant lots in there.
Well, um... I can look into it. We don't have the, there's nothing, when a deed is made by Georgia, I'm assuming it would be Georgia, that that's going to get reviewed by town council anyways. And at that time, I suppose we could look into seeing that there may be some agreement that protects the roads.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Another thing folks are asking me about is the road maintenance, like requests and a process and a plan. So I didn't know if there was a way to have a formalized request process so that people could say, report trees in a ditch on this road, report potholes on that road, as opposed to Facebook, to have it, you know, more formal process. People are asking about Winter Road, Maple Grove, North Division, Pound, and Tasker Hill, clog ditches, potholes, safety hazards, things like that. See, I think if we, if there is a formal process where folks feel like they could, you know, report something, um, people are asking for a plan as to what, how the roads are going to be addressed, or a timeline, or anything of that. Okay, is that something that we could publish?
Yeah, we have it available.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, there's a, it goes out, I want to say it was written on ten years.
Oh, not the capital improvement one, but like, uh, because capital improvement, I think, is like long-term, making sure that, um, we kind of circle through the roads to make sure they're good, but in terms of all the damage we have now and all the, from all the storms, all the tree damage and, and things like that, if there was, if people could understand how the immediate issues were going to be addressed.
We can't really address any of it until mud season's over, so you can't grade mud.
Nope. I don't know if we can pull trees out of ditches and unclog culverts and things that people are looking to report.
Have they been reported?
I don't know.
Generally, I know that there, there's a, a to-do list, you know what I mean? And when there is something that is reported, it does get put on that list for when there's a, it's kind of whether to take care of it.
Okay, so what's the best method for people to report it?
Generally, just call the DPW. I mean, or email them, one of the two things is generally what people do, if people call our office with an issue, we either take the message and send it off to DPW, or forward the email, or that kind of thing, but I don't think there's like a, I don't know what the word is, like a form or something like that that you fill out.
They'll take the phone calls and emails. That's what I tell everybody, is to call the DPW.
And it has, is the separate numbers on the website?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then is there an email on the website? I didn't notice that.
Yeah, that's on there, too, if you go onto the DPW department.
Okay, all right, so folks can contact them.
Yeah, and if it's a, by email, it's perfect, because then it's in writing, it's not just a phone message either, you know what I mean, there's a way to go back to it and to be, you know, so.
Thank you. Then folks have been asking me about the ball field, the plan and the materials.
That's on my list.
Let me see what I cover that you don't have to know. Yeah, I think, you know, on one hand, folks were looking for the bigger plan, like the overall timeline, the overall kind of project milestones, the cost, because I think last year there was cost, the estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand, there's sixty-two thousand in the ball field account, so I think folks were looking for what's happening when, the timeline and the cost, and if it exceeds the sixty-two, which I think has already had a, had a hit a bit, what's the plan for funding it? And then on a very specific level, the materials being used, the Casella company that's providing the, um, the Super Pete is a waste management company, folks couldn't, were confused about that, so it is a waste management company that has this organics division. Went on their website to look up, you know, their data sheets to see what they had about, to see what they had about it. The data sheets are from twenty eighteen that talk about the product information and the process and stuff. And I was, I was forwarded some studies from twenty-one and two from twenty twenty-three about PFAS concerns in wastewater biosolids, which is what goes into the Casella organics. So there, I guess, Unity Main, I guess, has specifically had issues with PFAS. So folks, I'm wondering if, if there was updated information, if the soil was PFAS tested, or what was the safety process?
It came up the other day because somebody did ask Josh about it, and he looked into it, and only because he mentioned it. But the, the, um, the way it is treated is that it meets any of the levels for anything like PFAS, it doesn't exceed any of the levels that are allowed for PFAS and that kind of thing. It's, yeah, it's got no, I don't know what the word is, contaminants, it's, but I don't know any of the exact details, but that was looked into because someone did specifically ask about PFAS.
Okay, if there's information that we could forward to people.
Josh has a breakdown of the makeup of the material we're using in his office.
Okay, was it like, with these things, or?
No, it's the, it's a breakdown of what's in the specific material we're using.
Okay.
So you can get, copy it up.
Okay, we agree. And then whatever the overall timeline is, and what's, what's happening at what point. And then my last thing was health insurance. Someone on the budget committee offered to help us shop around next time we're, or before we have our re-up, and to analyze the plans and try to get us the best plan for the best price.
I was talking with Andy Struth, our, our rep for Health Trust already, and he's given me a lot of information about different levels of the plan and different changes and that kind of stuff that can, that are still potentials for dealing with Health Trust. Not that I haven't looked at anything outside of that.
Okay.
We can definitely look into shopping it before the next budget cycle?
When is it up for renewal?
January first.
Okay, next year? Oh, every year?
Yep.
Okay.
We have to agree before that, but that's when the new, it starts, it's a new agreement every year.
So probably shopping, start shopping around in the next three months or so.
Is that it?
You know, one question on the manifest, there was a spectrum for a fire department receiver only, there were no other charges on the bill, just a receiver?
Yep.
Did we like forget to return something, or?
No, they have a specific unit at their, at the fire station for service. I'm not exactly sure of the details of it, but it does come separate from the regular bill. And I don't know, I can see what I can find out.
Chief could probably answer, but he's on a call.
That's all I got.
All right, the ball field. It is going to snow tomorrow, so I'm not in any hurry to get out there and do it, but as soon as the field dries up, Chief Brooks and I are going to mark, actually, we're not going to mark because we're going to start with the upper field so that we can get seventy-foot bases in immediately. So as soon as we are able to, we're going to peel the upper field.
What do you mean peel?
The entire infield. I'm talking infield only right now. We have to peel six inches off the infield and put in material that is hopefully going to be made by Burke that matches what everyone recommends out of Twin State Sand and Gravel. He's been in touch with them and intends to mix the same thing, but closer, because we need, if I math this right, upwards of four hundred and fifty yards of infield mix to do both fields, so trucking it out of Lebanon is not ideal, but if we can truck it from Burke, it'll save us a lot of money. He's looking between ten and fifteen dollars a yard or a ton, depending on how he charges it, but either way, I think it was somewhere around three to five thousand dollars for infield mix for both fields. And we have an offer to peel it with equipment for free. That's just the infield, and that'll happen as soon as we can.
And that's, is that, I'm sorry, is that just the baselines, or is that?
No, that's the entire infield. Everything that's dirt on the upper field will get removed and replaced. Once the upper field is done and is usable, we will do the lower field with this board's approval, which I want to wait for John to get back on that, but I'd like to cut the mound out and remove the grass from the infield for maintenance reasons, and have a strictly dirt infield down here, but I don't want to make that call without John here as well. But all of that will take place as soon as we can get out there. And last spoke with Josh, we don't need to wait until fall to do the outfields, but we're waiting on Village Green and their schedule before we do anything else, so we don't know exactly when the outfields will be done yet.
Okay, so the timeline for the infields is probably end of May, done by end of May?
I hope so.
Okay.
Mother Nature Whaling. But the, the outfields will be done this year regardless, it's just a matter of whether it happens now or in the fall. But that was all on my list, and I think we're nowhere near spending the sixty-three thousand dollars. So the infield mix, like I said, is all volunteer labor and five thousand dollars in material, maybe the outfield, I think, what, was it ten or twelve thousand dollars between the two? Yeah, but it was under twenty thousand dollars between Village Green and, I can't remember the name of the company, Consensus or whatever.
Casella.
Casella.
The initial fix will be about thirteen thousand dollars.
Right, so we're, we're under twenty thousand dollars for both right now, and then we would enter into a agreement with Village Green for yearly maintenance, which we don't have a definitive answer on what that costs yet, but we'll exhaust the maintenance funds, or the ball field fund on that maintenance going forward, so it doesn't come under the regular budget.
So the full rehab will be complete on that sixty-two?
Yes.
That's a lot better than the hundred and fifty that we were hearing just months ago.
Provided it works.
Okay. That works?
I have two people that are looking to be appointed to the Old Home Week Committee, Anita Dudley and Jake Martin. If you're okay with it, I'm okay with it. We need two more, and they can just come in and sign.
I'm so confused about how the Old Home Week Committee works.
We are just the agents to appoint. Outside of that, we are nothing.
It's confusing.
Years ago, the, um, they voted for him on the ballot. And the, uh, the Secretary of State's office said that that's not a ballot votable office. So to appoint people kind of by default, the selectmen ended up, due to the appointment, so they've been the ones who appoint.
Yeah, like the rec committee and?
Just like anybody else, yep, yep.
But they don't have, like, the meetings aren't recorded, there aren't minutes?
They're not technically a subcommittee of the Board of Select.
Right.
Why not?
They're their own entity.
Well, if you go back a hundred and something years ago, there was a declaration by the governor of how Old Homework Week, Old Home Week works. And that's what it's governed by. It's a committee, but it's not a committee, I guess. I, um, we can get that declaration.
Yeah, just for clarification.
It might actually be on the website, I feel like.
And then, um, like the, the funds, the money raised, and then the funds spent on the hot dog rolls and all the, all the expenses for Old Home Week.
Yep, it's audited each year by the auditors when they come and do all the books on the whole town. They audit those, too.
Do we, are we tracking it in?
Nope, we don't, no, they have their own checkbook and their own account, they write their own checks and all that kind of stuff, but they have all the supporting documents, and that's what the auditors go through to make sure that what came in is accounted for and what goes out is accounted for.
Yeah, their accounts are separate from town accounts.
And I think it may even have, it would be more separate if Michael wasn't involved here at Town Hall and in Old Home Week, you see what I'm saying? So there might not be as much, I don't know what the word is, crossover, you know what I mean, short of the selectmen appointing the people, there'd be really no reason for things to come out of this office for Old Home Week, maybe short of printing some, what's the word?
Fires?
Yeah.
I guess there's confusion because the fire department is heavily, like, town entities are very heavily involved in it, so it's just, like you said, crossover and confusion.
Yeah, I think so, it's just, well, the, the, um, Fire Department does the dinner, that's part of their, you know.
But that's part of the Fire Department's 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
That doesn't exist anymore. That went away four years ago.
That's a question for the chief.
Yeah, but that's for the rescue part of it.
Any fire rescue Madison, there was one that terminated four years ago.
Yeah, not enough familiar.
In any case, were you already with Anita and Jake on the Old Home Week Committee?
Yep.
Now let them know that it's been approved and they've been committed?
I'll ask Becky to make up those.
Yep.
Is there terms or is it three-year term?
That I don't know.
Well, Becky has all that, Will, I'm sure. We'll give them the most.
Give them twenty years?
Yeah.
All right, Linda, anything on your list?
Can't think of anything. The DPW guys, nobody's here because they went to Peterborough today for a UNHT two class on pavement management, I'm pretty sure that's what they, what the class was. And then another one, a couple weeks on gravel. So, yeah, that's where they are. But no, I don't, can't think of anything.
All right, just in the nick of time, Mr. Brooks, anything on your list?
It's gone quick.
Oh, well, um, nothing in particular. On the Fire Department side, we did recently have a, a dog go through the ice and people respond, so. Goes without saying, the ice, what is left is very thin, so keep an eye on your pets and your kids. The ice is much less safe than it ever was this winter, so probably stay off it for the rest of the season, be the safest thing. Let's see. Lean was executed Monday noon time. It's off to the registry to be recorded for the twenty twenty-three unpaid real estate taxes. I gave you a summary upstairs. It's about two, point two-five percent higher than last year, the amount leaned, so collection percentage is roughly the same usual, oh, little, right around one and a half percent. Gets, goes to lean, so nothing unusual there. Did you cover the Old Home Week?
Yep.
Okay. Very much, anything I can make up?
Chief King?
Interestingly, awaiting the third winter to begin, so other than that, we don't have a whole lot going on. Trying to, we're hoping to get the boat up and running here pretty soon, get the radar trailer out and deploy it a little more, make it a little more useful to everybody. We got Lieutenant Hayford is going to a training put on by the FBI next week on career and leadership, which is a very good thing for him moving forward for the PD and for him professionally, so. Other than that, we've got Drug Takeback Day coming up, date to be determined by the DEA at Blige, but it's usually the third weekend in April.
All right, Mr. Boyd?
Well, permit issuing is going fine, that's normal, just getting everybody used to the changes in the building mechanical permit ordinance changes. Mechanical permit fees went from thirty to fifty, so trying to get everybody educated on that. And we'll just, it'll be a little while for that. We're putting the new forms on the website, the mechanical permit form, that's been changed and that's been added, the building permit form is ninety-nine percent there, so that'll be on the website, so it's an education process at this point.
Yep. Perfect.
Did you get those abatement forms yet?
Yeah. Oh, they haven't seen them yet, but.
Could you explain it?
Yep.
No questions there. There was a timing issue between the execution of the lean and Alton Cyberspace and the Postal Service, two people that made payments that didn't arrive until today. So that just, rather than trying to collect an extra thirty-eight bucks from each of them, it's really, there's an eighteen-dollar, fifty-cent execution fee and then a twenty-five, a twenty-dollar search fee at the registry, that's what the thirty-eight dollars is. It's really not, I mean, they, they made an attempt to pay, although it didn't arrive by noon time yesterday.
Okay.
Heather's not here yet, but I'm sure she would want everybody to know that the extravaganza went swimmingly. There's something like fifty kids in attendance, lots of prizes, lots of eggs on heads, and a lot of fun was had. Softball's supposed to kick off on April fifteenth, but at the rate we're going, we'll see.
She requested the field for April eighth, I don't think that's going to happen.
I think it's, they wanted to kick off T-ball and softball April thirteenth and fifteenth or something like that, but I don't know that they'll be able to with the fields and the condition they're in, so they'll postpone that until they dry up. And merch is live.
Yes.
So you can buy sweatshirts, hats, all kinds of stuff for Madison Rec through Conway and Broder.
I saw in the papers, day trivia night Friday?
Cancelled. I don't know why, I haven't heard.
The, um, the facility that we wanted to use is unavailable.
Postponed to that?
Postponed.
New date to be determined.
While we're talking about cancellations, Planning Board's canceled tomorrow night.
Correct, yes, Planning Board meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled due to a lack of attendance and weather.
Oh, Conservation Commission Thursday might want to consider that as well.
Kate's got it on her radar, and she'll talk with the chairman.
Yeah, because the, I think the snow is supposed to start three-something Wednesday and go through three AM Friday morning.
Three, like afternoon Wednesday?
Three afternoon Wednesday, three AM Friday morning, yeah, straight.
All right, signature items.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Once with paper clips, have two places. Oh, Linda, I messed up. I signed my own.
Oh, huh. You want me to just white it out?
Yeah, that's fine. Should I be signing this one?
For Courtney?
Yeah.
I was wondering the same thing. We can just leave those aside because anyways.
Yeah.
Or maybe Joy can sign it.
Yeah. We will, uh, she's going to white out my signature, but it's also.
I'll wait for John.
Honestly, cross it out and initial it. That's better than waiting out. I've had to sign a lot of stuff for the FDA.
Oh, yeah.
Never white out.
Right, no. I'll get the registry. Something you decide for us for which.
Sign it all day. Checks and routers. I got tired of trying to write one in.
Ben's credits. Um, Chad has already reviewed them and approved them. And the one there that, um, I called over to Ospey and made sure that they weren't, um, getting an Ospey and they've taken it off their rolls there because they moved town, so. And those are property tax abatements that Chad has reviewed. The checks were already cut in anticipation of you guys approving it, just to make things smoother because the interest was figured to today. So I wanted to be able to get that mail. These were the tax collective abatements that Mike was talking about from those three properties that paid under the wire. There's, it's, I can cut it in half. Michael get half and we'll keep half, so it's two signatures.
Forgot to date that one.
I didn't date the other one either.
You guys, well, we don't date them.
I was going to say, Linda, Linda does that for me. Joey, what are you talking about?
I heard no such.
Those are intent to excavate all the coal mines for their for kids. Their taxes would be, that's the only thing that we have to worry about before we, uh, process it.
See, what I write, they have some bound to screw it up. I can't screw up my own signature.
Last two things, one's an intent to cut and the other one was the, um, that rec.
Yep.
Request for the revolving fund.
Yep.
Oh, yes. Taters crow. That's the MS two thirty-two, which is what was actually voted on at town meeting regarding our budget. Um, there was only two changes. One was that we lowered the line for, um, TV. And the twenty-five hundred dollar veterans, um, appropriation wasn't going into expendable trust fund. It went into a other fund. I don't remember which, um, proprietary, but anyways, that's pretty much the all changes. Upload that to the DRA portal.
Let me teach you how to scribble.
Hmm.
That was the T-ball donation went into the fund and that came out of the fund to, or will come out of the fund to pay for the.
All right. With that, we will turn to non-public per RSA ninety-one A three two little B, the hiring of any person as a public employee or roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Goshen.